Go shoot your episode on Tuesday.
Yeah, I'll be ready for it.
Okay. Yay, our great Thanksgiving!
Yeah, thank you, it should be, it should be good. Where are you headed?
Uh, I'm just going to town.
You're staying in town? I'm gonna go to like, city and uh, uh, where is she?
Your friend.
Yeah, my older friend, back in the war.
Oh, okay, yeah. Hi. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
How was it? Did you have any...
Oh yeah, great.
How are you?
It's, um, yeah.
So fast for you?
Yeah, uh, it's in uh, uh, when, when, uh, like, should be safe, but uh, we really feel about being very close to each other. On the street is very star trek, you know, there's uh, all these hot dogs, then hot dog.
Okay. Bye, I'll be late.
Wow, the place is uh, great. Hmm.
How are you?
Yes, well, it's thirty eight. They should be perfect, because.
I know. True. True, true, true. We'll see.
And they actually say, it's time to be a girl, wait.
Oh!
Big one now.
Uh, I think I, I don't know.
They're great, huh? Come in. Do you want to speak? Well, they'll probably ask you if you want to speak during that.
Good. I'm gonna say.
What are you putting? Like, they did that, did they? Yeah. How are you tonight? I think I'm missing, I think I have enough of this guy. It's just, it's here, like. I'll get stuff, I'll just.
How are you?
I thought you said sweet, you liked us.
I'm not gonna say it, I'm just gonna put thank you.
What do those things weigh? Yes, yes. That's good, that's good.
Now, it's just like, audio over. Yeah, I'm sorry. No, because I knew that, like, email over. Oh, I'm saying, for the, like, for people to sign up with me for the blood drive. And it's like, I get.
Getting out of here, so.
So.
Oh, you. Oh, my God, I just opened it right here. Watch one of the records, you know. Hello. Hello, hello, hello. How are you?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome, good evening and welcome, on this uh.
Full house.
Prefe-, yeah. Wait, wait till we, uh, wait till after public comment and, and our recognitions. I'm gonna uh, call us to order and I'm gonna ask the last three Mr. Sternstein to lead us in the fudge today. Thank you, um, I need a motion to approve the agenda, before I do, I'm gonna move item um, thirteen. I wanna move to after item eight. So I'm, I'll just make a motion to approve the agenda, moving item thirteen to, uh, okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Marcus. May we all vote that quickly? Okay, um, Dr. Breggy, report a closed session, please. Oh, I, right, I thought, I thought Ms. Marcus voted already, it was like, okay, sorry. Agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, agenda carries, thank you, Ms. Crosshaw, once again, the center of my brain. Closed session, action. Uh, the board voted unanimously to approve the suspension without pay for employee ZZ7679540, and directed by the superintendent or designee to send out notification to the employee regarding the board's action. And also, in addition, the board voted four to zero to approve settlement agreement for case number 18STCV08911. Thank you very much, sir. Public comment, Scott Redstone.
President, President Margot, other members of the school board, and superintendent, I wanna first of all wish all of you a healthy and happy Thanksgiving. And if by chance you need some way to burn off all those calories, it's a good segue into telling everybody about the Ninth Annual The Hogs Hattian 5K Run Walk, which is going to be this Sunday, December first, at eight thirty. You can get there and register early at seven thirty, or go to, uh, go online to thevahogfoundation.org and register. And it's going to be at the Police Boatyard, which is right by the library. And this organization that was set up by The Hog's father is really about a memorial, because he was killed by a drunk driver a number of years ago. And this was a Beverly Hills High School student. And if you're a parent or a student in the high school or middle school, I really urge you to attend this, because the message is to teach kids to make healthy choices and not to drive drunk or while texting. There's going to be a lot of prizes, there's no cost to enter this event, because the whole idea is to get as many people there as possible. We have over two hundred runners slash walkers, depending on how fit you are. And it really is to bring the community together, to remember The Hog and the reason why we're having the event. If you cannot make it, or you can make it and you're so inclined to make a donation, they'll be accepting donations the day of the race, or you could go online to the same place. Thank you very much. How many of you have been there in the past, have run it, or been involved? Well, we'd like to see everybody there this year. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Mr. Smith? Six.
I wanted to say a little bit about safety in the schools tonight. Last Thursday, Dr. Breggy sent an email about a non-credible threat to Beverly. And it's too bad that that's part of the world we're living in, but vigilance like this is much appreciated. Indeed, BHUSD has been recognized for our strong campus safety and security, and we can be proud of the steps you've taken to ensure the security of our students. There is, however, a chink in the armor, our substitute teachers. On any given day in the district, our students at any level, TK through twelve, could be supervised by one of our excellent substitute teachers. Some of our subs work at least fifty days each year and are members of BHEA. And while we entrust them to take care of our children, if the unthinkable was to happen and there was an immediate emergency on one of our campuses, they, and therefore the children in their care, would be at a distinct disadvantage. This is because some of the safety equipment and information is currently denied to our subs. For information, uh, equipment, I'm thinking about ID badges, for one thing. Substitutes do get parking passes, but they do not receive their own personal ID badges. In an emergency, when there might not be time to ask questions, a personalized ID badge might be the difference between safety and tragedy for our substitute teachers. Personalized ID badges would also be difficult to counterfeit, more difficult to counterfeit than the generic substitute ID badges that are, there are currently issues. Even visitors on our campuses are made temporary photo IDs while they're on campus, and why should we do less for our substitute teachers? Also, substitutes often do not have access to classroom emergency supplies. We need a standardized place in every classroom in the district where emergency supplies live. An emergency box, or even just a hook, in the same place in each classroom where the red backpacks are hung, would go a long way towards making our schools safer for subs and students. Substitutes don't have access to any district computers. Even if they bring their own laptops, they don't have access to BHUSD email accounts. They're completely out of the loop while managing our classrooms and our students. And the other side is information. Substitutes are left out of the information loop on many different levels. They do not have access to Share 911 or any of the email alerts from the district. Even if the district was to issue, say, substitute cell phones for each day, with Share One 911 and emergency texting on them, it would be a vast improvement to what we currently have. Our substitutes are not included in the safety and emergency procedures. Substitutes do not receive any of the emails and warnings sent out by the faculty and, uh, to the faculty and staff by the district office, like the one Dr. Breggy sent last week. They should be informed ahead of time, just like the rest of us. They should be able to choose whether or not to accept jobs on days with credible or even non-credible threats. That was a big issue, if you recall. Bob, Marty, and Terry worked together extensively regarding our retirees' benefits, a great liability facing us. This resulted in the establishment of a fund, this is the Gatsby 75 requirement. You and the committee evaluated, screened, recommended, and trusted, and secured a trusted advisor and auditor for that trust. A few further lobbied for the continued funding of this trust. You supported the auditing of the district utility bills, resulting in a saving in the district expenses. During your time in the committee, the committee advocated the hiring of a professional negotiator to represent the district in negotiating the new certificated contract with the teachers' union. You advocated for the hiring of a district spokesperson to improve communication with our community members. And most recently, Bob, you advised Mr. Roach in establishing a district policy for travel and expenses, also establishing guidelines for the use of the district credit card. I feel fortunate to have known you, to have worked with you, and congratulations on the job well done. Thank you. We're grateful for your service.
I'll make it as very brief. It was, uh...
Let me give you this.
Okay. So this is on behalf of a grateful district and school board, somebody who's actually been here longer than I have, which is saying a lot, because I've been here too long. Which I'm just... Yeah, good. Anyway, so this is just a small token, just to recognize, obviously, there's a lot more that we would love to be able to do for you, but since you were on our Finance Committee, you wouldn't let us buy anything.
Exactly. Exactly, out of pocket.
I say thank you and have at it.
Thanks. Well, it was definitely a privilege to be able to serve. I think I had to make up for many things I did as a student, from kindergarten all the way through, so. Mrs. Marcus would yell at me many times to get off the playground, back to, we were playing sports and get off, get back in the classroom. But I can still hear it.
When I could yell at the boys.
Yes, you did. You know, I was very fortunate to work with many talented people, and I think what I remember most about was dealing with the district, becoming a basic aid district, and going down to downtown county offices to figure out how they make the formula work and how we were going to get paid, to make sure we were being paid properly, because there was no other basic aid districts in the county. So it was something new. So it was, um, it was, it was very interesting. I learned a lot, and I was very fortunate to work with so many talented people on the committee, and definitely staff and the different superintendents over the years. And I think the district is doing a great job and really working for, many people forget that, the board members aren't paid. They're basically volunteers. They get elected, and I can, I understand the number of hours they work and how difficult it is, and so I would never do it.
You were also a volunteer.
Yeah, but I didn't have to take, I don't take the heat. So I'm very grateful to play a small part, and I'm grateful and very honored to be honored tonight.
Thank you. And if you want to stand there for a second, colleagues, if you...
Thank you for your work of behind the scenes and volunteering your time.
I've had the fortune of knowing you for a little bit longer than I've been on the board, and since I'm on the Finance Subcommittee, I've had the pleasure of working with you at our regular meetings, and I just have to thank you for all of your contributions, for your incredible guidance, for your level-headedness and reasonableness. And, you know, we're only successful at what we do because we have incredibly talented, resourceful people like you that help enable us, along with our cabinet, to make good decisions. So I thank you for your service, and we really appreciate your contributions.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I just hope that you don't go out of sight, because your expertise is really welcomed, and I want to thank you personally. I know that we didn't get to cross paths that much, but I do know that all the work you did made this a very, very successful Finance Committee, and I want to thank you and wish you good luck.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Sternstein, thank you for being here. It's really nice to see your daughter, Melissa. I think I met her when she was, what, two, three years old?
Younger.
Younger, yes, probably so. Anyway, so nice to see you. I know you're an alumni. Thank you for your service and for continuing to be part of the Beverly Hills Unified School District vision and mission, and I so appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel.
Bob, I just wanted to take this time and thank you very much for your service. I sit on just about every committee, and so there's lots of personalities on all of our committees, but I have to tell you, and you can ask, Pam can be my backup on this, you are one of the most approachable, down-to-earth, and just intelligent, just genuinely intelligent people that I've had the privilege of working with. You know, we started to introduce some sensitive projects into the Finance Committee, and the way that you handled yourself, the way that you handled other committee members as well, to kind of bring everybody in to be one, one team, was remarkable to watch. You're really good, I'm sure your daughter would agree with this, that you're really good at reading people. And so there were many times where I walked into some meetings and there was a lot going on in the district, a lot of my mind, and you were the first person to always kind of hang back a little bit after the meetings and say, you know, "Are you okay?" and, you know, "How are you doing?" That meant a lot to me personally, so I want to thank you for that. It's, I wish that you were staying, because the value that you added to our committee is greater than I could ever describe right now, but I'm just so grateful for the time that we did get to spend together. I also want to thank you for providing me with this easy button on those tough days. So I use it all the time, so I want to thank you, because you actually followed through and you dropped this off for me.
Just don't say the other part of it.
I won't. This part's hidden. But I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for us. I learned a great deal from you. The Finance Committee talks a lot with, which is School of Finance, and, you know, goes very deep into, through the auditing reports and a lot of the financial information, and you just, you were able to help, you know, make that digestible and really, you know, bring up some really good conversation among our team, and I'm hoping that will continue after, after you leave. So, thank you.
Once again, thank you, Bob, and all I will say is, fight on.
New coach.
Happy Thanksgiving, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Colleen. Okay, we are jumping forward to planning and facilities, so I can get these gigantic notebooks out of my eyesight. Why don't we do 13B first, and then we'll come to what I like to call the Jeff and Jeff Show.
I move ratification of amendment number two to the consultant services agreement with RMA Group for special inspection and/or testing services at Beverly Hills High School Buildings B1 and B2.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you, staff, for answering my question on that issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving now to 13A. Why don't we put the motion on the floor before the presentation?
I move for the approval of amendment number one to the leaseback agreement for the El Rodeo Campus Seismic Retrofit and Modernization Project with Pro West contractors.
I second.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Thank you. Tonight, we're here to present to you the bid results for the El Rodeo Campus Modernization Phase Two. Before I kind of go into what we have here in front of me, I wanted to mention, some of you may have heard, but last week, we received DSA approval at our Beverly Hills High School B4 building. That is the last DSA approval we needed to continue with the B1, B2, B3, B4 project. We're pretty happy about that, hard work by our architectural team. That will pave the way for us to bring you a GMP on December 17th for the B3, B4 project for Phase Two, to keep the program moving at a fast clip. In front of us, we have the bidding documents, the plans, specifications, the proposal documents prepared by Pro West during their bidding campaign over the last 90 days. Our project, the El Rodeo Modernization Project Phase Two, was advertised in three public advertisements for two weeks each. There was over 360 invitations sent out to specific trade contractors, over 1,077 follow-up phone calls made by the phone team on solicitation for bids for our project by the Pro West team, over 122 electronic downloads from their online plan room that they hosted for our project. Forty-eight people attended our job walk, and out of all that effort, 78 bids were received out of a total of 19 packages that were being advertised for an average of 3.9 bids per trade, which is phenomenal in this market. That's probably our best turnout so far in our master plan bidding over the past 18 months. We did, however, flag four of those packages for rebid. We felt that we can get a better price, a more competitive price, on a more comprehensive scope after the first of the year, and are bringing forth the remainder of those trades for approval, all wrapped into GMP for Phase Two of the $31 million price listed. So the electrical plumbing survey and sound barrier information will be in the subsequent bid that we'll bring back to you in the winter, along with the finished trades, like the plumbing, floor covering, toilet partitions, and some of the other systems. That will, will create the final GMP, the third and final GMP for the project. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm, feel free to ask, and I ask that you approve our proposed guaranteed maximum price for Phase Two of the El Rodeo project. Questions?
Questions? Okay.
On the bids, Mr. Powellman, were, were the actual bid that you got, the $31 million, was that about what you expected it to be? Was it higher than what you anticipated, or could it possibly have been lower? Is that...
We're tracking right on our projected budget at this time for these specific trade packages.
So that pretty much is right on target, then?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Powellman, is the, when is the work scheduled to commence on this particular...
The Phase One demolition packages that we got approved in July are going to be finishing up in the next two weeks, with approval tonight, about two to three weeks for contracting and insurance. We'll begin mobilizing at the end of the year and start hard on this work first week in January.
So there's no laps in...
No laps.
Okay, fantastic. All right, colleagues, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, so we will move back to the consent calendar, and have a good Thanksgiving, gentlemen. Is that the same cart you wheel the turkey out on?
Yes.
Okay. Are you pulling anything from consent? Kristen?
One more. Wait. Please, wait.
We're just pulling, um...
The minutes?
9A1.
Okay, as far as I know, so...
That's right.
I will move for the, you know, accept the consent calendar minus number 9A1.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let's go to 9A1. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the 11:12 meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's for discussion, because we have an amendment, Ms. Krauthar, to the minutes, correction?
A correction.
So it's line 31, by the way.
Line 31 on the certificating report that was approved last week, there was discussion, there was discussion on, on the, on the item, and so I believe that Mr. Seaman corrected Mrs. Marcus when she asked a follow-up question, referred to the program as the ILC program. He said it was actually a mistake in the certificating report, and it should have been recorded as an independent study course.
That is correct. It is independent study.
So I'd like to make that notation into the minutes, because that's what we, that's how it was approved. Thank you.
You're going to make a friendly amendment?
I'll make a friendly amendment to stipulate that notation into the minutes and that they be captured and noted that way.
Great, and I'll accept your friendly amendment. Who, did you second that? Who seconded that?
I did.
Mrs. Marcus, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
There was over 360 invitations sent out to specific trade contractors, over 1,077 follow-up phone calls made by the phone team on solicitation for bids for our project by the Pro West team, over 122 electronic downloads from their online plan room that they hosted for our project, 48 people attended our job walk, and out of all that effort, 78 bids were received out of a total of 19 packages that were being advertised for an average of 3.9 bids per trade, which is phenomenal in this market. That's probably our best turnout so far in our master plan bidding over the past 18 months. We did, however, flag four of those packages for rebid. We felt that we can get a better price, a more competitive price, on a more comprehensive scope after the first of the year, and are bringing forth the remainder of those trades for approval, all wrapped into GMP for Phase Two of the $31 million price listed. So the electrical plumbing survey and sound barrier information will be in the subsequent bid that we'll bring back to you in the winter, along with the finished trades, like the plumbing, floor covering, toilet partitions, and some of the other systems. That will create the final GMP, the third and final GMP for the project. So with that, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, and I ask that you approve our proposed guaranteed maximum price for Phase Two of the El Rodeo project.
Questions?
Questions.
Okay.
On the bids, Mr. Powellman, were the actual bid that you got, the $31 million, was that about what you expected it to be? Was it higher than what you anticipated, or could it possibly have been lower? Is that...
We're tracking right on our projected budget at this time for these specific trade packages.
So that pretty much is right on target, then?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Powellman, is the, when is the work scheduled to commence on this particular...
The Phase One demolition packages that we got approved in July are going to be finishing up in the next two weeks. With approval tonight, about two to three weeks for contracting and insurance, we'll begin mobilizing at the end of the year and start hard on this work first week of January.
So there's no lapse in...
No lapse.
Okay, fantastic. All right, colleagues, all in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, so we will move back to the consent calendar, and have a good Thanksgiving, gentlemen. Is that the same cart you wheel the turkey out on?
Yes.
Okay. Are you pulling anything from consent? Kristen?
One more. Wait. What is that?
We're just pulling...
The minutes?
9A1. Okay, as far as I know.
That's right.
I will move for the, accept the consent calendar minus number 9A1.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let's go to 9A1. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the 11:12 meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, that's for discussion, because we have an amendment, Ms. Kraus, how to the minutes. Correction?
A correction.
So it's line 31, by the way.
Line 31 on the certificated report that was approved last week, there was discussion, there was discussion on the, on the item, and so I believe that Mr. Seaman corrected Mrs. Marcus when she asked a follow-up question, referred to the program as the ILC program. He said it was actually a mistake in the certificated report, and it should have been recorded as an independent study course.
That is correct. It is independent study.
So I'd like to make that notation into the minutes, because that's what we, that's how it was approved. Thank you.
You're going to make a friendly amendment?
I'll make a friendly amendment to stipulate that notation into the minutes and that they be captured and noted that way.
Great, and I'll accept a friendly amendment. Who, did you second that? Who seconded that?
I did.
Mrs. Marcus, do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Terrific, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Harker, for the clarification on that one. Okay, moving on to reports. Dr. Bregge.
Just a quick report. I've had a few discussions with our new Executive Director for Technology, who is going to be sitting in an interim position for eight months, and taking the direction from the board to create kind of an eight-month plan, so that we can look at, you know, what his work will look like over the next eight months and recommendations he has moving forward. He has also been really progressive in his thinking, and he wants to hit the ground running, and so he, his first day will be on Monday, December 2nd, and he wants to meet with some groups of people, so that he can get to know them and kind of get to know what's working, what's not working. And so he's going to be starting with our Board of Education to get an insight of what their experience has been with technology. He'll also be meeting with some teachers, some administrators, some parents, so we welcome him. We're very glad that he is coming. He has a lot of experience in this area, and we look forward to giving the board continuous updates as his work progresses while he's here. And just a quick, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you very much, and before I turn it over to Thomas, I did want to say that Facilities Department, they're very modest, they left without announcing that they did receive final DSA approval on Buildings B3 and B4 this past week. So now all of our high school projects are fully DSA-approved, El Rodeo is fully DSA-approved, and the only project that still lingers in the current bond programs is the Hawthorne Auditorium, and we had a discussion about that today at the Hawthorne PTA meeting. So I am very encouraged and excited that our building project gets to move forward with these approvals. It's a major step forward from where we were a couple of years ago. So thank you, obviously, to everybody for continuing to keep the ball rolling and getting these schools rebuilt for our students. Thomas.
As many of you know, on November 14th, there's yet another school shooting at Sawyers High School. It's pretty sad that it is normal to see school shootings reported in the news this often, but this one struck different because of its proximity to us, only 35 miles away. My thoughts and prayers are with the victims and their families. Even though the issue of gun violence has yet to be addressed in Washington, I feel that this district is taking all the measures to ensure every student's safety, and I think Mr. Smith, for his comments about the small kinks that we may have, but I believe that mental health and gun violence go hand in hand, and for this reason, I would suggest to the Board and District Administration to consider adopting a Student Support Center for the middle schools, similar to the high schools' norm.
Thank you very much, Thomas. Okay, moving on to Human Resources. We have a public hearing, there's nothing for approval, right? Okay, just a hearing. Okay, so, the public hearing regarding the 2019-2020 re-opener sunshine items between the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the certificated unit of the Beverly Hills Education Association is now open at 5:35 PM. Government Code Section 3547 requires that all initial proposals of an exclusive representative of the public school employers which relate to matters within the scope of representation shall be presented at a public meeting of the public school employer and thereafter be a public record. The Beverly Hills Education Association's certificated unit and the district have agreed to sunshine the 2019-2020 re-opener, which is Article Four Hours, Section Five School Calendar, Appendix D, and Article Eight Class I, Section One, related to the 2018 through 2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement. We now invite members of the audience to address the Board of Education on the proposed The Board of Education has heard or not your comments and concerns, and we thank you very much for your input, as public hearing is now closed at 5:36 PM. Thank you. That's okay. Okay, so that takes us over to Business and Finance. I need a motion on Item 12A.
I'll move for the approval of the Builders Risk Insurance, Course of Construction Property Insurance for El Rodeo School Seismic Retrofit and Modernization Project.
I second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? From my understanding, and I know the gentleman has left, there are some cost savings to the bond program in shifting our insurance on this, so I appreciate the department looking into cost savings all the time. So if there's no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, wonderful.
I move approval of first reading of revised Board Policy BP 6146.1, High School Graduation Requirements.
Thank you. I will happily second that one. This is a first reading, so we have ample time, and I know I had some questions for staff which were halfway answered, but let me go around and see if anybody has any comments on this. No? Mrs. Marcus, anything?
Yeah, I have one. I was under the, thank you. I was under the impression that there would be a proficiency exam, and that that would eliminate, from what I would gather, then, the requirement of taking the class. Is that correct? Would that then alter the requirements of the graduation, the semester credits? How are you going to adjust that?
So we did speak about that, and we did want to make sure that that was an option that was available for students, that there was a proficiency exam, and that they could, if they met the requirements, that they would not have to take the class then.
Right, so my follow-up, and I asked that, and I didn't, this is where I didn't get the answer, if you don't mind me jumping in.
Okay, I'll let you do it, and I'll come back to another comment.
I'll be happy to, but this is directly related.
Yeah.
Is if they get the requirement waived, which I don't think any of us have an issue with, it's just proof of knowledge, proof of concept that we're concerned about.
Right.
And we raise the credit to graduate to 235, does waiving, does taking the exam and waiving the class give the student the five credits, or does that then open them up to five more credits that they'll have to take with either an extracurricular or something? Has that...
So, and that's why this is also a first reading, so that we can take a deeper dive into some of these questions, but it's our interpretation that, in the past, that people were not awarded credits for either taking a proficiency exam, or I'll use it, for example, if there's a middle school student that's taking Algebra I, you know, they wouldn't get the high school credits, they would still have their math requirement and credits. So it's our interpretation of this, the way that it's written now, but of course, it's evolving, because we need to add, like, the proficiency exam, that the students would still be at the 235 credits.
Okay, let me go back to Mrs. Marcus.
Yes, yesterday at the Health and Safety Commission, I mentioned this class being adopted, which had got a very positive thing. One of the members of the committee, Kathy Baker, Commissioner Baker, asked about the coverage of credit card usage, and also car loans and college loans being included in the class, and so I just thought I'd bring that to your attention, that this was something that she had brought up when I was, when I made the presentation at the commission. And I think that was the only thing I had wanted to mention.
I think that, and that's a great point, Mrs. Marcus, I think when we get further into the curriculum piece, we'll bring that before the Board of Education, because I think it's important that you are able to see all the topics that will be covered.
I told her that, that the curriculum would be developed, and I'm sure that that would be included.
But those are all things that we believe would be included, and so much more.
Thank you.
Did you have any more questions?
So just to be clear on Mr. Margot's question, Dr. Bregge, if I understood you correctly, are you saying that there would be an exam that would measure knowledge of the content of whatever you are going to be identifying the class or the curriculum to be?
Yes.
I know that you, I think there was like a brief synopsis of what that would include at the bottom of what we were, what we saw, but it wasn't clear to me if that's, if you're going to add to that, or is that basically it?
So, no, we would definitely add to that. So Mr. Seaman put that in just for a first reading, to just give kind of a sample of, you know, some things that have been discussed, but, you know, there are some other topic areas that need to be included in there as well.
So, what were you doing?
The only thing I would think is that we did discuss possibly having another way of satisfying this requirement, and I'd like to see that built in. I didn't really see that. I only saw two options, it was actually the exam or the actual class. And again, being that, I recognize that students are very busy, you know, some with athletics, some with after-school activities, jobs, internships, and what have you, I'd like to really be a little more flexible, and I'd like to see that captured in this, in our intent to do this correctly. So I haven't, is there any possibility after today, if this was to be approved for the first reading, to add that, or is this pretty much it?
No, no, there's, it's wide open for adding, so if there are any thoughts of additional way to, you know, capture the knowledge outside of, you know, a proficiency exam or what we offer, you know, at the middle school and high school, we're open to hearing what that would be.
Okay, so do you need to...
Yeah, well, I was gonna, I know Mrs. Marcus had one more thing, but let me just double that. When I asked the questions, and it was answered that a couple beside the coursework, which could be completed, you listed in possibly grade six through 12, so would allow people in middle school possibly to meet the requirement before they go to high school, assuming that the end of that course would be a similar exam to what a competency exam would be, in order to waive the course, which is another option, right?
Right.
You could take the middle school class, you can pass out of that, you could take an exam at the end of middle school, before you start high school, to pass out of it. But my thought is, regarding the credits, if somebody does prove competency in this area by the time they're in ninth grade, I don't think they should be responsible necessarily for five more credits. My, you know, my, where my concern here is, is that if they, it's there for them if they need it, but I wouldn't penalize those who don't need it. You know, you know what I'm saying? So if we're operating on 230 credits to graduate right now, and you pass an exam, why would you have to take then another five credits to graduate? Well, I'm not looking necessarily for that. It could be part of the, it would be, if you didn't pass out of it, it would be the additional five credits that you would be, it would be part of that. But that's, in thoughts about planning this out, that's my thought, is that I don't want to tack on another five, five units of credit to a student who has already proven competency and doesn't need to take this class, because then what are they, what is that for? Just an extra...
So you're not suggesting two different credit requirements? You're not suggesting, like, we have 230 and 235?
I'm suggesting that we have, you keep it 230 to graduate.
Okay.
But if, however they get to this one, whether they wind up taking an extra five units, or it's an elective, or they pass out of it, or whatever they do, it's a semester course we're talking about, right? And if it adds to their 235, if it adds to the 230 by the end of high school, great.
Right.
We're not going to stop them from doing that.
No, I understand.
Okay, so that's, does that, does everybody understand what I'm going for here?
Isn't this the same way that we manage language in the middle school, that they take, like, Spanish, for example, is split between two years, Spanish I and II, and then once kids pass that, then they come into the high school and start at Spanish III, IV?
Correct.
They already have credit for the I, II that they've taken.
But they don't, they don't get credit, they don't get high school units, right.
So it's just, it's really about competence.
Yes, it's about proving competency.
So it's not going to be a pathway to, to measure that competency for our students without impacting graduation.
Their schedule, exactly. That's what I'm asking, so, and I know that it's not an A through G requirement, this class would not be an A through G requirement, so you wouldn't want to have this take the place of what somebody may need to take to fulfill the A through G requirement, so that's why I didn't want it to be in a, I just let it be the additional competency, but not necessarily the additional course. Thomas, you're biding your time.
It's actually more flexible. Is it 230 credits if you pass the exam?
Yes.
235?
No.
But, no, not necessarily, because those 230 credits include elective, so you could take it, instead of taking another, what it does is, if you don't pass out of it in a competency exam, it would reduce a semester, bless it, it would reduce a semester of elective that you could possibly take, because you would have to take the class. Does that make sense?
So there's another alternative, too, is to, to look at this as something, you know, it's a requirement, and then it's a, it's a pass/fail requirement, so that it doesn't complicate the GPA, or in fact, just the credit, so that's even...
Yeah, I agree, that's a great idea. That's a great idea. So hopefully you have, you have some direction on how to get, come back with us with this.
Yes.
I think we're allowing it flexibility, a lot more flexibility.
We are.
And for the students, but we just want to know, make sure they know the topic.
Absolutely, and we'll come back again, and if there's more conversation, we'll bring it back again.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus, you had something here?
Yes, a question about the high school exit exam. It says that it would be, and the condition of, and it's been stopped and suspended since 2015. We haven't been giving it since 2015, is that...
Faced out in 2015, we haven't given it. It was eliminated by the CDE.
Okay, it's not, okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we're just voting on the first reading tonight, plenty of time to amend and adopt a strong policy here. I appreciate everybody's questions and concerns. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Fantastic, motion carries. Okay, communication from board members.
Great, can I just say something?
Yes.
We just did a first reading.
Yes.
And we just, we made a motion for the first reading only, correct?
Yes.
So we did not make a motion...
We did not make a motion for a second reading, and if it comes back in a second reading and we are not satisfied, we can bring it back as another second, or a third reading, right? At that point, it's a third reading. Yeah.
Because it was passed, I don't want people to think that we just passed it.
No, we are, we are, we basically, what's a, it's a, we accepted a draft, and now we're working on it.
All right.
Okay. Communication from board members, Thomas.
Beverly Hills High School Blood Drive, there's December 5th. All donors will receive a free AMC movie ticket, the first 15, two great movie tickets. It's open to the whole community, so if you would like to sign up, please reach out or email me. This Sunday, December 1st, at 8:30 AM, is the Ninth Annual Vahagan Sedian Memorial 5K Run. The 2006 Vahagan Sedian, a Beverly Hills High School student at the time, was killed as a passenger in a drunk-driving accident. He was not only a Beverly Hills High School student, but he immersed himself in the Beverly Hills community. This is a free event, put on by the Beverly Hills Police Department, Baker to Vegas Relay Team, and the Vahagan Sedian Charitable Foundation. Karan Sedian, the father of late Vahagan, is an amazing person, very active in the community. He brought every 15 minutes to the high school, which I had the opportunity to participate in, and has truly done a lot for this community. If you are available, please register online at vahagnfoundation.org, V-A-H-A-G-N foundation.org to register. And the race begins at the lower section of the police department, and this is a great way to burn off all the food consumed after Thanksgiving. And speaking about Thanksgiving, I hope that everyone has a safe and restful break.
Thank you.
That'll be my first 5K in a while, so I'm looking forward to it. I wanted to just reiterate my thanks to Bob Sternschein for his commitment and dedication to the Finance Committee. He's been very instrumental, and I'm happy that we were able to recognize him tonight for his time. I was not at the orchestra performance, I was unavailable that night, but I did go to the band performance at BV and listened to the percussion ensemble as well, and it was really something, particularly in light of all of the last couple of years' conversation about reconfiguration, critical mass, and what we were hoping to build in terms of opportunities for the kids. It was really tremendous to see that many students involved and engaged in this, in this, the band and the percussion ensemble, and I heard, and I saw video of the orchestra, I heard it was amazing as well. Wow, that's loud. I am looking forward to the performances of the Honor Choir and Magicals. There were three, I didn't, I missed the second one, so whatever that was, I apologize, I'm looking forward to it, though, on December 8th at Greystone. Very excited about the B4 approval for DSA. This is a really massive project, and it takes, it's a heavy lift for any school district, but particularly ours, in light of all of the other things that we've got going on, so it makes me really proud that we've been able to make so much, to make so many strides in that area. And again, as usual, I'm going to be the beating-a-dead-horse person about calendar. I still think it's really important to have input of the families and the parents in the district. I understand that the teachers have been surveyed, and they've had a chance to weigh in on their viewpoints and opinions, so I would really hope that at some point, we're able to have a conversation about what all stakeholders' interests are, before we move too far forward in making any decisions, and I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, a very restful weekend. Also, I'm hoping that I will be able to make all those events at Beverly Vista's Middle School or Core, because...
in making any decisions, and I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, a very restful weekend. Also, I'm hoping that I will be able to make all those events at Beverly Vista's Middle School or Core, because I think that's what it's all about, and I'm looking forward to try to get those dates again, and the places and the times, because they, I got a couple of them, but I need the others also. So thank you for letting me know that. I just want to wish everybody a very, very happy turkey, and try to come back ready to start the new year practically. It's almost been a year since I was elected to the school board. It's gone by very quickly, and I can't believe that we're about to reorganize in another two weeks, so, or maybe, is it two weeks?
Three.
Something like that, three weeks? It just seems like, wow. And thank you, and I'd love to say goodnight.
So I completely agree with everything that's been said, and so there's very little for me to say, other than to say happy Thanksgiving, and thank you to the Beverly Hills High School PTA for putting a very nice event for everyone here at the high school last week. I know that, I think everyone was present, I believe, and it was just a very beautiful event for all of us, and so I really thank them for their efforts, as always, for just doing all that they do. It's really remarkable, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the board and the staff, I think we want to wish our colleague, Mr. Spitz, and his wife Barbara, a very happy anniversary. It's a special day for them. I will keep the number under wraps, but I do note, and longer than mine, I'll put it that way. And also, to touch upon what Tristan said, the construction program, the magnitude of what we're doing here is quite incredible. I mean, it's well over half a billion dollars in bond funds that are going to improve our district facilities, and the fact that, I said B three and B four earlier, but I did not say what buildings they were, and for those that don't know, that's the Peters Auditorium and the Performing Arts Annex. And those, with the approval of those, and having the funding intact, we have a very formidable construction program here, and I think that's why we got almost an average of four bids per package. People understand that we're serious about building and want to get in on it with us, literally from the ground floor. So I am pleased at our department and how that's working. Dr. Bregge, you as well, since you are the superintendent, we all deserve some accolades in moving this forward. So with that, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Please attend and support all of our performing arts events. We have a district calendar online that has them all listed, which we've never had before, so that's really great. And I will see you back for my last hurrah on December 10th. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. I know, but I like to have it so that I go for money.
So what I want to say to you is, you gave us numbers, you stated some others.